Who has been with us before, but Sam and if you and your coach want to come forward, up to the front, I'm going to read a little bit from this and then I'll hand it off for pictures. But if y'all stand right there in the center. Sam Maxon is, we have basically in Temple ISD, our very own All-American. Sam was gifted with the Character and Leadership All-American Award from the United States Marine Corps for his outstanding leadership and character on and off the mat. Sam is a wrestler and we recognized him earlier this last year, you may remember that. Wrestlers and warriors, they share the, or I'm sorry wrestlers and Marines share the same spirit, they're warriors. And Sam, your academic excellence, fighting spirit, mental toughness, and work ethic are unmatched and are an example to your teammates and your, and the student body as a whole. And if I'm correct, Coach Clark, I think there's less than 200 of these awards given in the country. And we have our very own All-American in Sam Maxon, who is a great kid on and off the mat, super strong student and just character that you just can't beat. So Sam, we are so, so incredibly proud of you, so congratulations.
Sam, would you like to introduce your family? You've had quite a group here.
Yes, my family, my dad, Kevin, my mom, Jenny, my sister Victoria, my younger sister Georgia, and my little brother David.
Welcome.
He's also a wrestler, so he's a student.
Good deal. Awesome. Can't wait.
Well, Sam, congratulations to you too, incredible job representing the school district in everything you do. And I also want to give a shout out to Coach Clark here. Some of you may know, but he brought wrestling to Temple four years ago. And going into next year, your team is picked to win the region. So in four years, look what's happened. He has just done a fantastic job. Sam, you've always done a great job. Let's see what you have going on next year. Thank you so much. And thank you for having such a supportive family.
Yes. Yes. Oh, okay. Yeah. Y'all know, y'all know the drill. You know you can leave. Okay, good. Hey, that, hey, that works. Hey, and congratulations, Sam. Truly outstanding, really proud of you.
Thank you.
Tomorrow at 8:00 AM, Sam.
school Sampson Howard Elementary School in Fine Arts. The board made a presentation to Dr. Ott. The policy committee recommended that the new elementary school name, our TISD naming policy was adopted by the board and put in policy in 2019. Per policy, the list of names were discussed at the last policy committee on Wednesday, June 29, 2022. And the following names for the elementary school has been unanimously recommended by the policy committee for consideration and adoption. The name of the provider for consideration is Sampson Howard Elementary School. The name includes the three individuals Cornelius Sampson, Derwood, and Gene Howard. And I would like to read the board's rationale behind this naming. Cornelius Sampson, Temple native, a 1915 graduate of the Temple Negro School where he was valedictorian, Dunbar High School principal. He also served as athletic coach, debate coach, and math teacher, considered the father of Dunbar and the Panther football team. In 1938, he became the principal of the African-American high school in Corpus Christi. In Corpus Christi, he was credited for renovating the school's infrastructure, creating music and athletics. And in, in Corpus Christi, all the credit, I'm sorry, he, his, his most significant contribution occurred in the 1970s along with Hector P. Garcia Cornelius Sampson played a significant role in the landmark case Cisneros versus Corpus Christi ISD. This was a result of the integration of the school system and expanded civil rights and educational access to all minorities in Texas, listing his, him as first in naming, paying tribute to the magnitude of his contribution to the public education. Derwood and Gene Howard, Derwood Belmont Howard Jr. in January 1948, after graduating college, he took a teaching position in Temple as a band and orchestra director. In 1979, he was named the Director of Fine Arts and Humanities for Temple ISD. This was a direct correlation for the emphasis of his elementary school, which he became a Fine Arts Academy. Derwood, during his tenure, I'm sorry, Temple High School, the Temple Band played during halftime for the Dallas Cowboys and participated in the New Year's performance at the Cotton Bowl. Derwood Howard served as a music director for many shows at Temple schools and the Civic Theater. In 1971, he and his wife Gene co-founded the humanitarian class teaching together until retirement in 1984. Gene Howard taught civics and social studies for many years at, at Temple High School. Humanities class combined art, music, literature, and drama for Temple High School seniors. Both Howards participated in numerous local civil organizations that made fine arts available to Temple communities. After retirement, they worked with travel, local travel agencies to lead trips to European countries with a focus on museums, art galleries, and music events. Putting these names together into one school name and highlight significant contributions to public education from graduate, from former graduates. Cornelius Sampson further recognized as importance of fine arts and humanities in Temple, Texas, by owning a pioneer couple, Derwood and Gene Howard. This elementary school will be a Fine Arts Academy. This recommendation brought forward by the policy committee. I will now ask for a motion to adopt the name of the new elementary school Sampson Howard Elementary School.
I move to adopt the name.
We have a motion by Ms. Davis.
I'll second.
I have a second by Ms. Galwin. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Same sign? Aye.
And I have, I have a statement from Dan Posey, our board president. He said Sampson Howard Elementary School is named after three distinguished educators who made a positive impact in their students' lives. I strongly support the naming of this new school, the Sampson Howard Elementary School, which will be a Fine Arts Academy. He just wanted to make sure and let everybody know that he was in approval along with the rest of us.
All right, I have a few comments and then we'll move to the next item. First, I want to thank the community because they had a big part of this process. They provided names to the naming list and we've had names submitted, I guess, for the last couple of years now, last three years. And so it was obvious that these names were not only received by the board, but they were applied to the naming. These two names were included in the names that were submitted, or these three names, I should say, that were submitted to the board. Second, I want to take a little bit of time to recognize the school board's efforts here. School naming, as you know, it's a very, very sensitive matter. In Temple, the last time that was done was over 25 years ago. So this is not only sensitive, but it's a timeless effort as well. The board was very thorough. I mean, this is the board's decision and their process, so someone standing on the outside of it like me, I had the chance to, to watch them work through it and was very thorough and thoughtful process in terms of how they handled their deliberations. And I think this is something the school system and the community will be proud of for many, many years. And I do think it was the right board at the right time to, to go through this process. So I'm very proud of the board and, and I think it's something that all of you will be very proud of as well. And the last thing, and this is kind of off the beaten path a little bit, but it's often said that your real legacy in life is that of your own children. And then through some extensive research, we learned that neither Cornelius Sampson nor Derwood and Gene Howard had children of their own. However, in their absence, or in the absence of their own children, they will have an elementary school that will be full of children to represent their legacies. And I think that is really, really a neat deal for them. So we're just very excited for this moment in Temple ISD and we look forward to the opening in August of 2024. Thank you.
Sure. Our next item of business is Return to School Plan, Ms. Parks.
Good evening, Board and Dr. Ott. I am here before you to, to share the third iteration of our Return to School Plan. If you'll remember, back in 2021, we had a Return to School Plan that supported, as we had our hybrid model of in-person and remote instruction. Last year, we revised the plan as we were getting ready to have our students all return to in-person learning. And then this year, it is revised again as we are moving to more of a normalized state with the pandemic. Technically, it's called post-peak and post-pandemic phases. Those are the two phases of the pandemic where we are kind of oscillating right now. So our plan reflects some of those changes in the severity of the pandemic as it becomes more normalized. So I just wanted to walk us through some of the highlights. I'm not going to go through this entire plan with you. It is on our website right now live. I'll show you that at the very end where you can get to it. But I wanted to give you an overview. So again, this plan, the whole goal of this plan is to keep our students and our staff in our classrooms where we know in-person instruction is the most important and most effective model. So that is the whole idea behind these protocols that allow us to do that and to provide a continuity of services for our students. Again, operational protocols that are outlined here, we have been very successful in the last two years as we have had very low reported case counts and we have not had to close a single campus due to a COVID outbreak. So we believe that these protocols are effective and we believe in our staff and their ability to implement these protocols. And that is really the most important piece because you can have all you want to on a piece of paper and the best-laid plans, but unless you have staff that are willing to implement with fidelity, you don't get the results that we have seen here. And so again, we are so very grateful for our staff for how they have implemented these plans. The biggest change in this year's plan is that we are moving towards a tiered model of, of support so that we have some different options based on how the virus is spreading in our area and in our community. So we have three tiers. We have a standard tier that are going to be our standard protocols. Our enhanced protocols would be something that we would move to as a campus or a district if necessary, if there was a widespread of the virus or an outbreak. And then there's the closure protocols that we've had previously, and that's our continuity of services plan if we would ever have to close schools. And again, as a reminder, we haven't had to use those for school closures due to the pandemic, but we did use them for school closures when we had terrible weather. So they were great and Lisa and I are so glad that we had them in place, so we were able to use them for that. But those are here and those continuity of service plan, that is tied to with some of our ESR requirements for our ESR funds. So just know that that plan is still very much in place and we have that here. But just to give you, I, I did give you guys a little, a three-column, one-sheeter as kind of a, an overview to explain and, and show the different tiers. Standard is going to be what we start school with, and I'll get to this one here in just a second. So again, it's not possible to eliminate all the risk factors that, that are involved with COVID, but there are steps that we can take and be deliberate about that will hopefully help mitigate that. So under the standard model, the protocols there are for students, staff, parents, and visitors, and they will be asked to practice healthy habits. We are going to continue to promote our healthy habits. That is something that we have ingrained into the very fiber of who we are and we will continue to support those. And again, that's hand washing, sanitizing when possible, keeping appropriate distance when and when, when possible, and then also staying home when you're sick and not, you know, we, we like to power through things, but at the same time, when we're in a pandemic, we need to probably stay home. So really promoting those healthy habits, promoting self-screening and self-reporting daily for symptoms. And so we, last two years, we have gotten our students and our staff trained in, in how to look for those symptoms and how to self-screen, so we're going to ask them to continue to do that. And then obviously ask that we continue to self-report positive tests as well. And then campus and department notifications will happen on a weekly basis as opposed to a daily basis. Back in the spring, I think Mr. Hagerberg, from April, April and May, I think we might have sent a total of six letters maybe district-wide. And so we're going to wait and we'll send notifications. Again, we will continue to notify the whole campus, but it'll be a weekly notification. So on Friday, if there was a case in your, in your, on your child's campus, you would get a notification. Now, if there was close contact for your child, you'll continue to be notified in a much more direct and timely manner. So that will still continue for the close contact. But just as far as notifications of a case on the campus, that will happen on a weekly basis. Again, we will promote the use of face coverings for those especially who have not been vaccinated. We will have face coverings available for those who want them. Vaccinations are not required, but again, encouraged. Again, the close contacts, you, you, staff and students will be notified if they were in close contact with an infected individual on the campus. Again, the self-screening, self-reporting, and again, that idea of personal space and, and just when and where possible, just to, you know, especially in elementary schools, we kind of like to crowd all over each other. So it's not a bad thing sometimes to just be mindful of that. And so we will continue with that. And so the things to note that are not part of the standard protocol, so that's something that would be a change for next year, is we won't have visitor restrictions on campuses if we're under the standard protocol. So visitors will come in just as normal, not necessarily by appointment or like we did before. We, we won't have the required daily screenings that staff are doing, again, for students. Again, it'll be a self-screening process. We won't, we don't have to use the protective barriers. We can if we'd like, but we don't have to. We won't have capacity restrictions, so we, we won't hold indoor celebrations that are, you know, 50 or fewer people. We won't have those restrictions to start if we're on, if we're using the standard protocol. And then we won't have isolation rooms if we are under the standard protocol. So that's an overview and snapshot of standard, which again, is what we are planning to open the school year with. Our enhanced procedures will be identical to the procedures we used this last school year. So that, that means we will have visitor restrictions, we will have daily screenings that will be done in a very visible way, we'll have the protective barriers, we will most likely have some capacity restrictions on events, isolation rooms will, drinking fountains will be off limits, and we'll return to using reportable, I'm sorry, disposable trays. And then we'll have daily, we'll move back to daily reporting and notifications if we move to the enhanced protocol. So again, just an overview of what the differences are. So again, basically, those procedures will be identical to last year and this last school year and how we operated if we had to move to the enhanced. And Bell County Health Department did put out their recommendations, I guess, either late last week or over the weekend. And this morning, I spent time reviewing ours to make sure that we are in line with their recommendations. And our standard protocol is actually a little bit more, offers a little bit more than what their basic tier suggests. And then our, our enhanced, they're in, what, what they call their level two, I believe, or, or enhanced, we, we are right in line. So we are right in line with everything that the Health Department has put forward as well. In fact, a little bit more, we might be taking a little bit more precautions in some areas than even they said that we needed to be. But again, that's something that's proven to be effective for us in helping to mitigate the spread. And then, of course, the last option would be closure protocols if we had to close the campus, and those are very extensive and you've seen those before. It talks about what day one would look like, who would do what for each of the departments, and how we would work together with the campus to support if we had to move to a temporary transition to remote instruction. So that is really an overview of any of the changes in the plan. The tiered model, I think, is, is a great way to look at it. Again, we know what today looks like, we don't know what tomorrow will. So we will be, we will be ready and prepared with plans and protocols should we need to become a little bit more restrictive or cautious as we move forward. So any questions? And if I can, just for, for a second, Mr. Gaines, I'll show you real quick online where they are so that if you are out and about, and they are already online on the website, and they're available for staff and students as well as families to access. But you'll look under the Families tab, you'll see Return to Learn COVID Protocol. It's also under the Student tab, and it provides both documents here in their full, like the actual Word document for you to look at in English and Spanish. And then the slideshow is down at the bottom and so that you can look at both options. So that's just, that's there already and it's, it's something that we'll reference. One of the things that we will launch, I think probably next week, if, if we've got everything backed up the way it needs to look, is a back-to-school checklist. And you can see that the Return to Learn Plan is one of those links here, and so this will launch and we'll send it to families next week where all of their back-to-school items are here in one place. And as well as, teachers to review as well, because that's always a good thing to review at the beginning of the year. And you see our Return to Learn Plan and handbooks as they get updated will be here as well.
And Kristin will email that link to all the families, this back-to-school checklist link as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Parks. Appreciate all the work and efforts you put into getting all these ready for our families. I'm sure our families would appreciate having all those things available to them to, to look at, to prepare for school. Our next item of business is consideration for approval of TISD Board Operating Procedures, Annual Review. Dr. Ott emailed us a copy to all of the board members, a copy of the annual review. And there was, there was actually no changes made to it. I think there was a few cosmetic changes, I think dates and things that were changed on there, but actually no changes. But this does require a motion from the board. Any questions?
I'll move to approve.
Motion by Ms. Galwin.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Davis. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign? The ayes have it, it's approval. And I think, I don't know, we'll get with each one of us to have us sign the executive session contract for each member. Move to our next item, which is important dates, Dr. Ott.
This will be very quick, it's light. We bring principals back July 20th, it's their, I'm sorry. Oh, the 18th, their, their meeting's the 20th, so we give them, I guess, a day or two to figure everything out before we bombard them with everything. Oh, is that it? It's in the eye of the beholder. July 27 through the 29th is Oldsworth Leadership Academy. Lisa, Donna, and I will be attending that. And I think that wraps up December, maybe? Is that right? So we're getting pretty close to finishing touches on that. And then, of course, we have our Board Policy Committee meeting July 27 and our Facilities Committee the 28th. You'll get a list of professional development opportunities altogether, we'll email that to you. I know some, some of you like to attend some of those or just pop in. I know the staff likes to see you when we get closer to, to those opportunities at the beginning of school. And we'll, you know, in some cases, you'll be speaking to the staff, whether you want to or not, new teachers or whoever it may be. So, but we'll get all that put together for you when we get closer. And that's all I have, Mr. Gaines.
Thank you, Dr. Ott. Consent items, what would be the board's pleasure on items 7A through E5?
I'll move that we approve them all together.
We have a motion by Ms. Myers.
Second.
Second by Ms. Juarez. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Next, next action item, human resources, no items on the human resources and academics? Ms. Lisa? I get used to saying academics instead of CNI, I guess that's, it's a new term, right?
Yeah.
I know everybody was like, do we have to get new shirts? And I go, I guess so. Right? My ladies, it was all about the clothing.
Changed on the org chart, changed it all over the place.
All about the swag. We gotta have new clothes.
It's okay, change is good.
All good, all good. All right. So good evening, Board and Dr. Ott. I'm here to discuss our assessment results from the spring STAR results. We, we've concluded our testing and have all of our official results, as well as give you an update on our House Bill III goals. Remember, we had to, as a school board during, actually, when we were closed in the spring of 2020, you set goals on early literacy, early numeracy, and college and career readiness. And so I'm here to give you an update based on our progress for this school year. And then in August, I'll come back and share with you our, our goals for next year. So in terms of the assessment results, we'll start with math. And so what you see here in the light blue was 2021 results. I want to remind you that in the, in the school year of 2020, 2021, students were allowed the opportunity to not attend school, they could attend remotely, and not all students, if students did not come to school, they did not take the STAR test. So we did have, while in, in Temple ISD, we did have the majority of our students in school, and by the time we administered the STAR, we did have some of our students not take that assessment. So just wanted to remind you of that. What you'll see is we saw great growth in our math scores from the 2021 school year to the 2022 school year this spring. And so we, you know, in, in Temple, we push for growth, we want students to make progress. And so while we see some great growth, especially in the lower grades and in the, in, in the upper grades, in eighth grade, in Algebra I, we haven't really caught our students up just quite as much. That, that year, that spring of not having explicit instruction in math, and then that year of, remember in January, we made all of our students come back last year because we told them they had to come back to school and be in person. So that's really impacted some of those upper grades, that algebraic concepts and those sorts of things. But we're still continuing to push and to see growth, and we did see lots of students make lots of progress this year. So irregardless of what the scores are, I'm very proud of the students and the staff and our parents for all the hard work that we did this year to get back on track because COVID really did impact math achievement, not just in Temple, but across the state. But we had some great areas of celebration there, so super excited about that. You're really going to be excited on the next slide because in reading language arts, we saw tremendous growth. Yes, we're super excited about that. And so we, we saw our students perform, outperform in all areas and really, really had some really strong achievement at the upper, at the upper levels and the master's level. So very, very proud of the growth that the students have made, and we'll just continue to be charging forward and growing there. But I know that our directors are here, they wanted to, Ms. Rogers and Dr. Genowitz are here, because they, they're instrumental in working with our principals to build, to build this achievement. And we really focused on really having really good, high-quality materials for our students and our teachers and having really strong training in literacy. And- strong training in literacy. And and I think that's what we see as evidence from that. So very proud of of these ladies. Um in English I and English II, this is where we're not seeing as much growth as we should. Um if you recall, in 2020, students didn't have to take the EOC. They just had to pass the class. Um and then in 2021, we had lots of students who didn't come to school um until until the first semester, and then we started having them come back. And so we we do, and and the English I and II test is very challenging. It's very challenging. So we will very, we're gonna really push and have a very specific effort um this next year. We did see lots of students make progress. I'm very proud of what they accomplished in summer school, and I'll talk to you a little bit about that. Um but we really need to continue to push and grow uh in this area. This is an area of focus for us for the next year. Um in science, we take the um science test in fifth, eighth grade, and in biology. And so we did have some improvement in all three of those areas, and so that's great. Um and so proud of the progress, and so we'll just continue to be working in that area. But it's an isolated assessment in those three grade levels. Um and then in social studies, we take the assessment um in two areas. Um and so eighth grade did show some growth, um not as much as I'd like to see. And so we'll just continue to keep pushing in that area. Uh um US history at the high school level is always a strong score. Um we had 84% of our students um meet standard. Um and so we'll just, you know, they're, they do an amazing job. And so we'll just continue to push and work in that area as well. So um I did also want to update you on the EO um EOC retesters. And so just to show you a comparison, um from the, from tw- um retesters take the retest in December, and then they take it um in May, right, if they didn't pass it for the previous um the spring administration. And so what you see is because we had so many students not have to take the assessment in 2020, because if you passed the course, you didn't have to take the STAR, you got credit for the STAR exam as part of your graduation requirement. We had very few students need that retesting. Um and then um this school year, we had quite a few, a few more students because they were not in school that first semester. A lot of our freshmen took the opportunity to stay home and do remote instruction. Um and so that that had, that significantly impacted our number of retesters. Um but we're continuing to work on that, and I have great uh information to share with you um in the summer. So um continuing to push that. But we do have a little bit of a bubble in English I and II, and so that will be an area of focus for us next year. Any questions about the assessment results before I move to House Bill III? Okay. Um so in terms of House Bill III, we set a goal, and then we have progress measures for each grade level. And so in, last year, you set a goal that by um 2025, um third-grade students would um either be at the MEETS or above um grade level on the reading STAR for, um then they would move from 27% to 33%. And then we had to create kind of a a yearly goal. Every year, we have to have a a target. And so our goal for this year was 28% of our third graders would hit that mark, and we actually exceeded that goal by 10%. We had 38% of our students um exceed that gar- mark. So we'll have to reset that goal um for next year. Uh and then you can see by, um and then we also monitor this goal by closing the gap. So we look at each da- each student group and see how they're doing. And you can see that all of our students um made great progress in this area. Then underneath this goal, we have progress measures. And so we have a progress measure, um and we measure literacy in pre-K, Kinder, first, and second. And so what you'll see is that in pre-K, we had a target of 93% because of the previous four four-year-olds had scored very high. We didn't have a lot of fo- we didn't have a con- um as large a group of four-year-olds um during remote instruction, um because a lot of students, you know, parents just, they were nervous about sending their four-year-olds and three-year-olds to school, and I understand that. Um so we did have, and we didn't quite achieve that target, and so we'll continue to work there um for the next school year. And so we have some new and adjustments to our curriculum to support that. Um in first, in kindergarten, our goal was to hit a 35 this year, and we met a thirty, we had a 36% of our um first graders um hit that mark on MAP, and so that was great to see. Um in first grade, um our goal was 29% for this year, and we hit our mark. We had 29% of our students um meet uh meet that uh measure on MAP. Um and then in second grade, our goal was 32%, and we had 36% of our students um hit that measure in reading. And so reading is not just, uh we're not sho- seeing great great growth in the in the grades, grades three through eight. We're also seeing that um growth at the, in the primary grades, which is why um our students are making so much progress. And so we're um proud of their work, and we'll continue to measure this. So in August, I'll bring to you new goals um for the ones that we've already met, um so that can, we can readjust those for next year, and you and you can determine what you'd like to do there. In the area of math, um we set a goal um that of that we would have 28% of our students in third grade meet, be at or above that MEETS grade level measure for STAR. Our our yearly target this year was a 23%, and we had 31% of our students hit that. So definitely making progress in um in math. And in our closing the gaps, you can see that many, some of our um our our student groups doubled their score in one year, which is, which is great progress. And so we're just continuing to support our students, um to make sure that we're making progress and recovering um from uh the pandemic. Our progress measures, um in pre-kindergarten, we we, our target was 99%, and we had 98% of our students hit that mark. And so I'm gonna call that good. Um but we didn't quite hit that mark, and so we'll we'll continue to work there. Um but pre-K may, had a very specific focus on math this year, and um and that's evident by their scores. In Kinder, our goal was to hit a 34% of our students to be um at that level um on MAP, and we had 40% of our students achieve that. So definitely making progress in Kinder. Um in uh fir- in first grade, uh we had, um our goal was 39 perc- uh 33%, and we we um we met, we we beat that goal by 11%, um which is really wonderful. So we were at a 44%. So definitely making some progress in the area of math. And those all impact um our STAR scores as well, right? Um and then in second grade, uh we we were able to um um beat our goal of 22% by 10 points and and meet that measure of a 33%. Um and all of our our sub pops have been, um our 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 student groups are are growing as well. Um so uh very proud of the progress that elementary uh primary grades are making. And so then in terms of college and career and military readiness, that's the third goal that you have to set as a board. And so you set a goal that we would have 43% of our students by the year 2025 be deemed um college and career ready. They would earn that college and career or military-ready um uh point um for the accountability measures. And so your goal this year was a 38%. We actually achieved 41%, which is really good. It is important to note that this data is is a year old. And so this is actually data from the class of 2021, not the class of 2022. So even though the state said we weren't accountable for STAR and data last year, we actually still were. Um we were we're still held accountable for college and career readiness and graduation rate. Um one of the progress measures is that we wanted to work on our TSI requirements. So that means that a student is deemed college and career ready, ready, because they've met either college entrance exam requirements, or they've um achieved a college uh a college degree, like an associate's degree, okay? And so our goal was um that we would have 20% of our students hit that, and we weren't able to meet that. We actually had 15%. Um we had a lot of students last year that didn't take SAT, um that didn't take TSI-A because of the flexibility allowed for college entrance exams because of COVID. And so we weren't able to atta- obtain those points. Um we're still held accountable for them, but we weren't able to obtain those points um for that. And so that's uh an area we'll continue to work on, and we have a college-ready plan that we're working through with our high schools. Um and then our other one was to um increase our industry um certifications, and your goal was 9%. And we actually had 14% of our students in the class of 2021 achieve, achieve an um industry-based certification. And I think Dr. Ott has shared that um Denise's department was able to double that for this school year. So we're definitely gonna have to reset our goals there because uh there we're out, we're way outperforming our goals in those areas, um but uh doing a, doing a fantastic job in that area as well. So that concludes House Bill III update. Do you have any questions about that?
Good question.
So I would say
Yes, sir. And some of it's from not this school year, but last school year as well. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Adams.
I'm the next one, too.
Oh, you're the next, okay. Go ahead.
Um so Dr. Ott asked me to bring a summer school report, and we don't call it summer school anymore because that's not fun. We call it Camp Extra. Uh Christine came up with this uh because, you know what? That makes kids want to come because it's camp, and it makes teachers want to teach because it's camp. Um and so we call it Camp Extra, um which is extra time for acceleration and uh learning. And so we have utilized at Camp Extra this summer to actually prepare our students for the upcoming school year. So we invited students to make sure that they were set and ready um for the upcoming school year based on our assessment results. Um we had an enormous response this year. We served over 450 middle school students, and that was on a daily basis. They came to camp, which was wonderful. We had almost, Lamar Middle School was almost totally full. Uh we had over 680 elementary students, and I think our largest turnout of bilingual students as well, Mrs. Narros, if I'm right, over 254 bilingual students. Um what what's so exciting, and I'll just tell you, I was, I attended a meeting for Dr. Ott, and I had another assistant superintendent ask me if we were having trouble hiring teachers or getting kids to come. And I said, no, we just turned into camp. And it's super fun. And so um they definitely have a great time. Um we utilize Camp Extra, you know, part of the, we talked about this before, is that the state legislature passed a law that we have to require 30 hours of accelerated instruction if you're not successful in your state assessment. So what we did is you, during Camp Extra, we served all of these students who came, we 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 met those accelerated instruction requirements through um STEM-focused activities where we integrated math, science, and English and um Spanish language arts standards. And so it was fun, but it was also tutoring and um inter- intervention and support. And so I'll just show you some fun pictures because I think the kids say it best. Um this is um some pictures from elementary. Uh they worked on a solar system unit where they created their own planets and solar system. I think the teacher was more excited than the students. That's what I love, is that teachers get to teach the things that they're most passionate about. One science teacher told me, it's doing all the fun stuff that I don't have time to do during the school year. Um and so they love teaching it as well. But this is a group of elementary students. Um and these sweet girls read a book about um owls, and then they made um puppets, and they learned about going outside. So there was science and language arts all attached to that. And then don't forget that learning can be fun, because these these boys were practicing strategy um when they were playing outside, um playing um checkers. Um so that's good thinking skills there. For bilingual, um this is, we have a group of our youngest learners here. They are naming objects and writing, um and so we're focusing on increasing their writing and their speaking, listening skills. Um this was very neat. Our um Mrs. Narros and the bilingual principal, Ms. Loya, they connected with the Temple Public Library. And once a week, they, their bookmobile came up, and the kiddos got to check out books, which was a great thing. We had so many moms come, too, during that. So they were taking their younger siblings. Um so it's a great way to connect our community um to these services that they provide. So I loved that. Um and this is some of our older students in the bilingual group, and they were learning about rain. And so they were making uh rain or something. They were doing a science experiment. But they were, they could tell you all about it, and they loved it. It was super fun. In middle school, um this is a group of students designing orthopedic shoes. So they were, they were, I know, they were given a lot of problem-based learning. So this is a problem. What would you do? And so the kids were designing um an orthopedic shoe um there. Um we connected with Workforce Solution, you know, our partners right across. And so they came in and brought their VTEC uh virtual glasses, and kids uh kids got to explore different um careers um as part of Camp Extra. The um and then my favorite, we were doing mean, median, and mode with race cars, um with Hot Wheels. And so that was really fun. And so I I thought that was a great way to reinforce that math concept as well. The teacher was having more fun than the kids, I think. Um and then they had lots of brain breaks and different, I can't show you all the videos they did, but go on Twitter and you can see. It wa- it was super fun. At the high school, I don't have really great pictures, but I have really great stats. We had over 458 high school students, ninth, 10th, and 11th grade students, attend and attend summer school. We do call it summer school in high school because it's serious business. You gotta get your stuff done. Um they recovered over 305 credits. Um we had 178 accelerated students who earned 137 credits, so they got ahead. Um we had 278 students, the mo- the most we've ever had, attend our EOC prep classes. And so they are receive instruction to prepare them for the retest in June, and that they're required to take, but they also recovered their credits of 198 credits. I think it's the largest summer school we ever had. Um that was, that's, we had 909 students serve. That's almost half the high school. Um and they earned a total of 640 credits. So super impressed with Mr. Hernandez and Ms. Mitchell. They ran an excellent summer school this summer. And, you know, we had a lot of kids that just didn't get, didn't get things done last year. And so that was a really great opportunity. Um I do think they will run um an August credit recovery camp uh right before we issue diplomas, uh just to check in on some kiddos. And we did have one student graduate and was a summer graduate um at um the high sc- at the high school. And I think we had two high school gra- um summer graduates from Edwards. And so, so that's exciting as well. So um so that's my update on summer school and Camp Extra. If you have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Appreciate it. Uh bilingual ESL program report, Sis Narros?
Hello, good evening. Um I'm gonna set this up. So um this is going to, um this is a report to tell you what we did last year and how we progressed. Uh again, our program, we have different programs in our, in our bilingual ESL. Um by the way, I don't know if you know this, but we're now um emergent bilinguals, so now we're EB's. So that's a new acronym the TEA gave us. So under our program, we do have bilingual ESL, and we have newcomer program, again, at the um middle school, high school, and then at um we had, we serve them at all of the bilingual schools. Population growth over the years, as you can see, we've been steadily growing. Um but overall, if you count in our um, well, this is our our number, 1,158 kids. Um we have the most denials that I've ever had, but we also have the most kids we've ever had. So that's, um at the end of the year, we were about 15% of the district. Um we count in all of the monitored kids. We have, we actually have about 1,300 kids that we that we serve in our program. Students tested, over the years, we test kids. Not everybody qualifies, but most kids do. But last year, we had an all-time high. We tested over 191 kids. It's a lot of ki- lot of testing, so. Um and then as far as newcomers or recent immigrants to our um country, we had a total of 52 come in last year, um the majority being in elementary and um uh and we had a few sprinkled in in the in the middle schools and the high school as well. Stu- uh we are also having to, we use the STAR state assessment and Tellpass in order to um measure our students and see if they uh they can reclassify or exit out of the program. And as Dr. Adams alluded earlier with the Tellpass and, I mean, the STAR scores, we also have Tellpass scores. And this is just a graph, just basically to show overall that, like, blue, for example, is beginning, red intermediate, yellow advanced, and green advanced high. We need to be moving more into the yellow and the green areas, and we're not getting there. It's just, it's just very difficult for our kids to move out of the beginning and intermediate stages. So we have to have a plan for that. So we do have a plan. Um so next year, we are gonna do, we revamped everything. We meaning like me. Uh we revamped the program um as far as how we're going to um, we're going to rate our students, and we're gonna use a new program or an assessment called Flashlight 360. We polluted this in the summer, and it was really um good to to see that, the implementation. The teachers really um grasped onto this program, and they were able to um get motivated about it and and learn about it. And so then they, when they tested their students, even though we only had four weeks of summer school, we did move the needle. I can't say we had hum- humongous progress, but we did see some changes. So I'm excited to see what this is gonna do during the school year. We have the whole uh year pretty much planned out as far as the training is concerned, and then how the uh the assessment windows, and then when we're gonna score them. So we're going to kind of mon- I'm gonna monitor that throughout the school year and then go and do some observations. So to make sure that this is going to be implemented very well. We also have um Rosetta Stone for the newcomers, and we only use that as appropriate, just a handful of licenses. And those are mainly for the kids that come into the middle school and high school with zero English. And a lot of times, they're most motivated because they need, they want to learn the the language. They'll put that on their phone as an app, and they'll use that, you know, in the evenings or on the weekends and things like that. And I monitor that as well, and I see that they are just really wanting to do that. And it, um we use that this past year in uh with some, with some parents, and I'll show you that in just a little bit. Even the parents got excited about it, and they really Even the parents got excited about it, and they really showed some, some interest with that. We also have, last year, we had intensive small group instruction. Thanks to the ESAR grant, we had ESAR paras help with those groups, and that was it, that would, that worked very well last year. So, as far as our EL, EB, I should say EB, I made a mistake, STAR results. Dr. Adams went over all of this, but again, I'm also proud of this, even though it could be better. We could always do better, but I think that our kids, you can, you can see the kids that are in the third, fourth, all the way to about the eighth grade, you know, they're, they're progressing really well. The kids that are in English I and English II, well, they're EB's. So, they're having a hard time with English. And that's, and like you said, it was very rigorous to be able to pass that exam, but we're working on that as well. We use a program called I-Lid in six through 12, and at the beginning of the school year, beginning, middle, and end of the school year, we give them also an assessment to, to see where they're, where they're at. And overall, you see that's the number of years that they have progressed. So, about two years of, of growth, of reading growth, that's, doesn't sound like a lot, but it's a lot when you're in a grade level and you don't know English very well, and you grow two years of reading instruction, that's actually pretty, pretty good growth. And because they did so well, they set goals for themselves. We got to go skating, and that was another skill that they learned, and it was really fun. I mean, I, I just gave you the, the G pictures because there were some pictures that I was like, oh, my goodness. I mean, I, they, they, they did very well, but they were good sports. So, anyway, it was fun to see them go out and skate. It was one of my favorite things to do. Results-driven accountability, we, I'm going to talk to you about this from the lens of the student achievement from Domain One. In the past, we've done Domain Three, and the way this calculated, Dr. Morgan and I, we, we kind of, we redid this, and she helped me come up with these, with these stats. We had 28 of 29 graduate, and the EB graduation rate was a 96.6. And this is the same kind of calculations that are used in our district improvement plan, so that's why I use this one as well. Over the year, we have lots of professional development, and I just listed those for you for the state because they, they want to see this report as well. And you can see toward the, at the bottom, I have the Flashlight 360 training. We had, we polished that for summer school, and we have that all fleshed out for the school year. So, we'll have our teachers all participate in that training as well. And, and note also that our bilingual teachers all participate in that rigorous reading academy training. So, that's, I'm proud of them for being troopers for that as well. Certifications, we had only 10 last year, but that's also because the state kind of halted things, and they said, you know, they wanted to try to do everything through their website. TEA came up with the, with the workshop and things like that. That wasn't very successful, so now I get to go back and do some refresher training. And so, I have some face-to-face ESL certification academies coming up. I'm going to work with principals directly to see how I can best serve this, those schools and try to get those numbers up, because I think that's really important. We always can use more ESL teachers. And then, again, we have partnerships with the, the people right across the ways, and they came in, and, and we actually expanded this. We had it only at the high school. Now, we do it in, in middle school and high school. And they, they, our kids really gravitate to Ms. Gomez and, and her partner, I can't remember her name, but they, they come in and they teach them about resumes and how to dress and how, how to look people in the eye. And that's not always something that, in our, in a lot of our cultures, that is acceptable. So, when you tell them to do, to do that, they're like, "Are you sure we're supposed to do that?" So, anyway, proper etiquette, how to speak clearly and things like that. We had lots of parent involvement activities. I see one, my number one fan right there. It was so much fun that day. We had, I always call it the concert on the plaza. I guess I get it from the Today Show. But anyway, we had so many parents come out and, and participate with, in the kids. This was a great community event, and that's my little entourage on the right. I mean, without those ladies, it's, yeah, that, I, I really owe a lot to them because they helped me in our department. And notice that was on May the 2nd because the next, very next day, May 3rd, I had another big party. We had the parent involvement night, and this is the one where we had the Rosetta Stone parents rotate through one of the sessions. So, we had a very busy week that week. We also had our regular standby, our, our Skyward people, our TISD counselors that, I mean, Temple High School counselors that always come, our truancy people. We had student services, Temple Workforce College, and the CTE. So, that gives the, the parents an idea of how, the different opportunities that are available here in Temple ISD. We also had a guest speaker up in the right-hand corner, and they talked to the, our, our parents about, you know, there's the importance of being in school, the importance of, you know, just everything in general. We really appreciate everything there. Summer enrichment, Dr. Adams alluded to this as well. We did have full day of instruction, and we did expand this to, from pre-K through fifth grade. We had a language-rich curriculum, accelerated learning, lots of hands-on learning. We also got, I have to say this, we also got one of our teachers out of retirement, what an awesome teacher, and so, I'm so excited about her coming back to TISD. Again, our community partners, we have, HEB's always been a really good partner to us. They, they actually provided lots of things for our summer staff, summer enrichment. And then, I have to say that our, my secretary, her brother is a policeman, so we've got to use our resources, right? And then, I just love that last picture. I just thought that was so cool. HR has done a really good job recruiting, and those are eight opportunities that, you know, that they have had to go out and recruit to, for teachers that not only recruit for bilingual, they recruit for everybody. So, I'm very appreciative to them and all of their hard work. And that is just the recommendation that the DEC law says that I have to talk to you every year, so. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Mrs. Snarros? Thank you, Connie. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
Facilities and operations. Kent Boyd and Ms. Parks got a tag team.
Tag team for Smart Tag?
It's not the same thing yet.
Well, well, okay. We can just do it this way, yeah, because, because this is a team effort here, team effort. Thank you all for the opportunity to visit tonight. What we want to do is bring you an update on the Smart Tag program. This is something that you all approved the purchase of several months ago. We used ESAR funding to make the initial purchase, and then, of course, it's something that as time goes on, we'll build it into the regular budget to, to maintain that in the years. I'd like to first of all also mention appreciation to Amy Skopak for her work on this because A- Amy looked into this, into this program for months before, before recommending that we move toward this and approve it. And then, since the approval, she's been working very hard to develop guidelines and parameters and, and a rollout plan for that. So, so what Christine and I are bringing to you tonight are really, a lot of this is work that Amy has invested in this, and I appreciate her for that. Also mention that this is something that we involve principals in. We had meetings back in early June with several principals, with Victor at high school from a, from a safety standpoint to make sure that as we roll this out, we do this in a manner that is, that is implemented with the most opportunity for success and something that will be as easy to implement as possible and that where we can garner the most support. So, a lot of folks have been involved in this, and this is just a culmination tonight of, of where we've been. So, what is Smart Tag? Smart Tag is a ridership solution, and what this does, it improves safety and security for the students that we transport. It's a live monitoring device that allows, allows the district to monitor where and when students are loading on or unloading the bus, and ultimately provides us as a district and parents an opportunity to monitor where their students are in real time. So, it's, it's a tremendous safety enhancement and allows us to, to monitor in real time, some things that it does not do. You said the parents can monitor in real time. Is there an app on their phone or something? Ultimately, it will be, and I'll talk through that in the rollout. This is something that when we talk to the implementation piece, we're, we're going to get to that point. We don't want to try to, try to, try to do all that at first, but yes, it is. And that's one of the really appealing things to this, really nice features that will allow parents to, to track as well or to monitor as well.
And if you just want to look at the picture in the background, you can see that this child, they have a tag that they are putting on a scanner. You can see it's a barcode, and then you can see the tablet that the bus driver sees. So, it's got a green check. That means that kid is registered to that bus, so that's good. And if, if that was not the case, then there are protocols that happen there, and then that way, we can make sure that students are going to the right bus. As you mentioned, at the beginning of the year in particular, that is quite a task, trying to make sure we get all kids on the right bus as they are learning those processes. And as well, when they, when this child gets off the bus, he'll scan his card again, and it'll pop up, and it'll be a green check if he's getting off at the right stop. If he's not getting off at the right stop, it'll be, I think it's a red X, and then we can figure out, okay, no, you're not supposed to get off here. Let's figure out where, where, where we need to go. So, that's just kind of functionality for you to be able to visually see what is actually going to happen with that process. And you can see the badge, it doesn't have, it doesn't have a picture of the kid on it. It, it will have the name of the child on it, but it will not have a picture or the other identifying information on that tag.
And, and something else that's, that's important to note, because this was a question that, that some had, and I know a parent, parents would have this question. This is something that is only monitored when they check on and check off the bus. So, so this is not something that, that you could track where people are during the day wandering around. You can't track them after hours. That, that's only for, for that purpose, and that's, that's the only ability that's there. So, it is truly a, a safety monitoring piece. As Christine said, when they, when they get on the bus, they, they have that, that card scanned, and then the same when they get off the bus. Really important, especially for the, the younger children, that's, it's not so much getting on because we pick up whoever is at the stop, but, but even getting on, this allows us to ensure that whoever gets on is in fact a student. For the younger kids, that's not going to be a problem, but, but this would preclude anyone who might be older who isn't a student, who might want to ride the bus for some reason or another. This would preclude that from happening. But, but it's really for us, I think, that the real benefit's going to be in the afternoon with those little kids, because when the year starts, oftentimes, people are, little kids are confused as to where their bus stop is, and even though that, the, the campus goes over that with them and they're supposed to know, sometimes they get off at the wrong stop, and, and if bus drivers don't know their kids yet, they don't, they may not know which stop they're supposed to be exiting the bus. So, this will really, really help there. Again, some of the things that it does, it will allow for us to send and receive alerts directly to a driver's tablet that'll be in the bus, sends out the alerts that, when the child will appear. So, they'll appear, and then it sends out mass notifications to parents to inform them about things such as delays. So, that's another, another really important piece is if, if the bus is running late due to traffic or another challenge, this allows the parents to be notified immediately that's the case. They don't have to worry, they don't have to, to try to contact the school about that. So, that, that'll certainly help with a communication piece. And looking at the next one, and Ronnie, this gets to what, what you asked about. There, and this was something that we taught, in talking with the principals, we really determined, and Christine did a good job of really breaking this down into three manageable phases, because there's a lot here to monitor, and there's a lot here to implement. So, phase one is what we'll be doing in the summer. The transportation department will be reaching out to parents. They will have opportunities throughout the community and locations for parents to come sign up. They will also at, prior to school starting, at campus meetings to meet the teacher and so forth, there will be opportunities there to sign up. But, but our focus is going to be on issuing and using those, those tags, Smart Tags, and for getting the system operational, getting the parents and the students used to it, getting the campus used to it. So, there are dashboards that the campus can use to monitor, and then ultimately, parents. But as you've seen, we're trying to, to slow-play that, not slow-play it, but we're trying to roll that out once we're, we're confident that we've got the first step taken care of.
So, just that process of issuing tags and getting students used to and accustomed to using tags is going to be the peak shift. And other districts that we've visited with and other principals have been in other districts, and they shared with us some of their experiences. We know that that's going to be a huge leap. So, the good news is, is that the transportation department prints those little tags. They've got a little scanner, and so, they will print those tags. All the bus enrollment processes will be the same as they were before. When a student is enrolled, the campus checks and scatters that they need transportation, and then that kid gets added to a bus list. And so, transportation has all of that information, and as new students are enrolled, they will continue to update that information. You get all the little badges, tags printed. As a district, we are going to, where's Eric? Eric, you have your little, your badge on, on the thing? As a district, we're going to purchase, yes, thank you for such a great demonstration.
Do that again.
Thank you. We are going to purchase those for all of our students so that they can go in backpacks, they can go in all of those kinds of things. And one of our principals said, she's like, "That's great that we're going to have those, but we got to zip tie them onto the backpacks." Because in my district, you know, for little people, they fell off. So, that's great. We're going to have zip ties too. So, zip ties and, and, and those little retractable tags. So, just getting those tags to students, Amy really wants to work with families to help them see and understand how it's going to work. So, she is, she's planning several community opportunities at several different apartment complexes. We hope to have those outlined in the next couple of weeks, and we'll publicize those. She's going to be, and her staff are going to be at every meet the teacher and other orientations for freshmen and sixth graders, just to make sure we are getting those tags and again, explaining the significance of that. And then, students or families who will come to those events will obviously have those available on day one, on that bus for that child to issue to them that day, that, that day. But again, just like with anything, it's going to take time for these processes to become ingrained. And one of the things that Amy said she had learned from several other districts, you know, we can learn from successes just as much as we can learn from maybe misses in other places, but that if you don't ensure that the tag is being used with fidelity, you might as well not even use the system. So, that piece is, that's why it's so important to us to really focus on that piece upfront and not worry about the, the bells and whistles pieces on campus or for families. We want to make sure we're focusing on students using those.
Yeah, it was, Nikki Murphy was one, is one of our principals that had used this in a, in a previous district, and she's, and she was very helpful. She was on our committee, and she said, "One, it's very much worth it, and it is very beneficial, and it certainly does some great things." But she said, "But, but there are some things you have to do to make sure that you are implementing it correctly and in a way that sets you up for success." But yeah, it is important from, from the districts that Amy's talked to, and Nikki echoed this. If, if you're going to do it, it doesn't need to be an optional thing. It needs to be something that we're, we're, we're doing that. We're not looking at punitive items or anything of that nature, but, but we think that we can, hopefully through encouragement, the vast majority of people will, will buy into it. They'll see the benefit of it, and over time, I think it'll be something that'll be very well-received, and I think people will see it for what it is, and that is a true safety enhancement and a communication tool. It, it allows parents to know, like I said, ultimately, when everything is, is operational, it'll allow parents to be able to track and know where their, their children are and understand if there's delay, and certainly be aware of those things. So, yeah, very excited about the potential there. But those are the three phases, and that right now is, is where we're headed. Kind of in line with that, there are three different groups that are responsible for this, transportation, the campuses, and communications. As always, the campuses become involved, and, and that was another thing we didn't want to do, was add a layer of something else to do. And while there will be at first, I think, again, the campuses that we had on our, on our groups that we had for feedback, really, they see the benefit certainly outweighing the, the, the work to get this, this underway. And again, like most things, once I think we've gotten through the first year, this just becomes natural and just becomes normal and just becomes part of how we operate. But those are some of the things that you see there that, that each campus will be, or each group will be responsible for. But we'll make sure that we have that ready, and communications will serve a really critical role as well in that. So, a couple of things in talking through, and there was a whole laundry list of questions, and we, we thought, we're going to, we're going to try to make this simple and, and try to communicate in the try to communicate in the most simple way possible, but there are some things that we wanted to point out. Uh, one, uh, people say if, if we are questioned, is it required? Well, yes, it is, it is expected. Uh, this, this is going to be the way we operate. Again, it's important to uh, to support that, uh, and so, so we're going to do that. It's expected that they will have that.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Are we gonna train then, bus drivers on how to deal with parents or students who don't have, that as far as we want to be on that?
So we will, again, we'll let them on, uh, but, but we will verify, and, and they can then check in. It'll slow things down, and we're, again, we're hopeful that um, that people buy into that and that we don't run into that problem much. If we do, that's something we're going to address on a case-by-case basis, and uh, rather than, than, and that may be what that, we've talked through that. Yeah, it's, it, it's, it's something that once they've, once that's happened three time with, three times within a ten-day period, if they've missed that, then we're gonna send a notification to the parent, and then we'll talk to them individually. Again, rather than, than coming out and saying, if you don't comply, here's what's gonna happen, we're gonna err on the side of, I think most people will want to and will, uh, and so if we have some that, that we have an issue with, we'll, we'll address those individually as, as time goes on. But again, uh, we'll have the support of the campus, Transportation in here, and yes, we will uh, talk to them about how to manage that.
And so if a student doesn't have their tag, if the bus, if the bus gets their bus, they will absolutely be able to do it on the bus, but the driver does have to manually input that. And so it will, it's a little bit, it's a, it's just slower, it's more time to do, which is why we encourage the use of those tags. So they will manually input it, um, the system is able to catalog that, and if you get three manual inputs within a seven-day period, then it will send your parents a text and say, hey, you know, your child hasn't used their card, and, you know, hasn't scanned, and, you know, so many times this week, and we'll word that to where, you know, please help them locate it, or, but here's where you can, who's, here's who you can contact and be able to do it. Um, so again, we don't want it to be punitive, we want it to be as positive as possible, especially in the early stages, but yeah, we will absolutely let a kid on the bus at the stop if they don't have their tag, um, uh, but it does slow the process down a little bit. Um, and the great news is, is that, so if the student registered, um, uh, or newly enrolled during the year, um, when bus service becomes available for that child, they'll, Transportation will print the card and send it with the bus drivers to, to school that afternoon. So that child will get their, uh, their card that afternoon as soon as Transportation is available.
Also, we'll provide the information, obviously, if, if they lose a badge, we're, we're going to cover that. Some districts charge students uh, for when they, to have a, a, a badge reprinted. Um, we, we elected not to do that. Uh, we felt like one that, that doesn't set you up for success very well. Now, obviously, if we have habitual issues, again, we'll deal with those one-on-one, but I, you know, I, I think we'd rather look at it as a more positive, hey, look, we're gonna help you, and if things get lost, and if they do, we're gonna print another one. We can make that happen, uh, we're not gonna charge you for that, uh, so, but, but we'll make sure that they know how to do that. The campuses will know, Transportation will know, Communications will, will make sure that we get that information out. And again, in talking with other people at other districts, the vast majority of people embrace it, understand it, it, it flows seamlessly, and they don't have issues. Again, just every now and then, you're gonna, you're gonna run into a, a little bit of a challenge, and it, as we do, we'll work through those again individually.
Looked like you'd get parents buy-in though, because this is something that say, a safety aspect for the kids, they know where the kids at, they're able to track their kids. I mean, it's something that maybe we can put on the, out, on the dashboard to, for parents to see, to start looking at this, to familiarize with it, that this is coming.
Yeah, a- and I thi, and I think you're right, Ronnie. I think that's what, again, that's the feedback we've received. Most people really embrace it because it is a way, and, I mean, let's face it, I mean, we, it's, we look back now and it, you know, I think, you know, when we were growing up, our kids couldn't track where we are, couldn't monitor where we were. Now, you know, I know if, I mean, I can't tell exactly where my adult, or my grown children are, but I know I can look at their cellphone, I can tell, I can pretty well know where they are by uh, Find My iPhone or wherever. You know, it's, it's, you know, everybody's got a cellphone on them now, everybody has instant communication with everyone right now, and that didn't used to be the case. I think things like this are, are almost expectations as you start to move forward, that, that, that you have the ability, when these, when these uh, opportunities are out there, when you have tools like this that can enhance safety and monitoring, I think most parents welcome that just like we do when we keep up with our kids on their.
I mean, you know, they're gonna, we're gonna only be responsible where they get off at that bus stop, though.
That's correct.
That's for real.
Oh, yes, that's, I, no, monitoring stops there, yes.
It's stopped, but again, there, you know, and there are times, I, I mean, and it's, it's not malicious, but you have kids that'll get off because they don't want to go to their stop, and they want to get off with their buddy and go to their buddy's house, and then when they don't show up where they're supposed to be, uh, you know, especially if you have not just a new student or a new route driver, but you have a substitute route driver, you may not know. When you get to know the kids, you know when someone's getting off at the right spot, but, but that's not, I mean, you can't depend on that to always be the case, so this allows you to do that, and there have been times that kids have gone off with their friends, and they don't get off, and the parent doesn't know where they are, and they call and check, and we're saying, well, we, we're not a hundred percent sure where, we know where they're supposed to get off. Um, so this just really alleviates a lot of those challenges.
And we will, we will uh, do a, a really formal press release and a, and a huge information push closer to time. In fact, we've had a couple of um, uh, media that have reached out, because they saw it on the agenda tonight, asking if they could just, or just ask them if they would just wait a little while, because we'd like for that push to happen closer to the start of school, we'll reach more families, because it'll be more timely. So um, we will make sure to get the information out.
So I guess it's something that'll flag the bus driver, what's, who's coming off, supposed to get off at this stop, and then they'll all be checked off?
It'll ta, yeah, if someone tries to get off and it's not their stop, it'll, it'll tell them.
Flag it.
And if they say, I'm supposed to get off here today, they'll say, no, this is not your stop. So yeah, it'll, it'll be helpful for things of that nature.
I think that'll be really good. Thank you, Kent.
We're, we're excited, we are very excited about it. Amy's very excited, uh, she's uh, and I appreciate this, she's very uh, anxious about it and cautious about it, and I can certainly appreciate uh, someone looking at something like that because she wants it to go right, uh, and, and, and she wants it to be uh, embraced for what it is, and, and I believe that it will be. So I really appreciate everything she's, she's done to get us to this point.
Thank you, Mr. Boy. Appreciate it. Uh, finance, we don't have any items there today. Um, Student Services, neither do we have any there. Board Committee reports, the Facility Committee update, uh, meeting was held June thirtieth, uh, twenty four, uh, twenty twenty-two at four P M. The meeting, it was called to order at four, three P M. I guess if I get over here, you can hear me a little bit better. The, uh, Mr. Wolf presented a renderings with different uh, entries and design options for the committee to uh, select from. The committee selected option one B. I guess you don't know what that looks like, but it was, it was some different options for the front of the school with different colors that in, in lettering that we talked about during that committee meeting. Uh, rendings, uh, Mr. Wolf will, will uh, send these to the committee, I mean, comments to Stan Tech to request additional rendings for review in our next meeting. Update on uh, field events and area track replacement, Mr. Wolf presented a report on the progress of a paragon track and turf and replacement project. The project is on schedule to be finished uh, on or before August first, and is currently under budget, which we always like to hear that. Additional uh, future item for discussion, Dr. Ott reported that the administration was approaching, approached by individuals about selling the district property that is adjacent to Temple High School. Uh, Dr. Ott requested additional information from the individual. This will, information will be provided once it becomes available. Uh, the meeting was adjourned at four forty-one P M, and our next meeting will be held Thursday, July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two at four P M. Policy Committee update, Ms. Davis?
The meeting was called to order at four oh three P M. Ken Invaden, Chief Financial Officer, presented the annual review of the investment policy and investment strategies. No changes were recommended. A motion was made by Dan Posey and seconded by Ronnie Gaines to approve the resolution stating that the board reviewed the investment policy and investment strategies, and that no changes were made. The motion carried six to zero. Eric Hagerberg presented the elementary attendance boundaries, reserve process. This process will be completed by August twenty twenty-four for the new elementary school opening. Dan Posey presented his recommendation for naming the new elementary school. Following discussion, there were no other recommendations. Mr. Posey made a motion and seconded by Sanji Sanghi to recommend attending the name Samson hyphen Howard Elementary School, parentheses, Fine Arts Academy, to the board for consideration at tonight's board meeting. The motion carried six to zero. The meeting was adjourned at four forty-nine P M. The next Policy Committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, July twenty-seventh at four
Thank you all for coming. Appreciate it.